Okay, we are recording. We're recording. We're recording.
Hello, everybody. And welcome to the pre-town meeting for our town meeting next Tuesday. We have four of the selectmen here. I'm not sure if someone's going to show up or not, but we'll go ahead and just run down through the warnings and discuss anything you want. The meeting is being livestreamed, so we'd like you to come in here and talk so that you can be seen on the livestream. You can't be seen from back there. You probably can't be heard from back there either. So I'm not sure if I make an audience. We're going to have not quite as big as the Super Bowl, I'm sure, but maybe we'll have some people watching. Okay, so the first article is to elect a moderator for a year. I'm the moderator now. I plan to run for reelection and then to elect selectmen. So a select board member for a term of three years. I need to get, figure out whose. Was that Warner Hodgson's seat? You have people on the court selecting that.
I think it was Gary Allers.
Yeah, that was Gary Allers. Okay, so that's Gary Allers' seat and it's for three years. So it would have ended. Okay. It would have ended this year, so it is a three-year seat. We, thanks to Jen, we have a bunch of people who are interested in running. She held a meeting last, I guess it was last week or week before, for people that are interested in running. So we are electing four members to the Board of Selectmen. With the number of people that are interested in running, excuse me, it could end up with multiple people for the same office. So if you are planning to run, I would suggest that you decide which seat you want to go for and maybe decide which one you want to be nominated for. Hopefully, not everybody jumps into the first one because if we have five or six people running on the same ballot, excuse me, we have to go through three ballots before we can start eliminating people from the ballot. So if nobody gets a majority and we go to three ballots, we could go on a long time. So try to pick and not have everybody running for the same seat. With that said, anybody who is interested in running for selectmen here want to say anything? I know you had a chance last week at that meeting, but if you want to say something now, you're welcome to. Anybody?
Very briefly, I was not able to attend last week due to death in a family.
He's going to talk.
You want to come down here and speak so that so the audience that's watching from home. Where is the? That's it, right there.
This one doesn't work. It'll follow you.
So state your name and what I want to say.
Hi, Ben Lion. I was unable to attend last week to announce my run due to death in a family by attempting a running. And yeah, looking forward to serving the town if I'm selected.
Okay, anybody? Yes?
Well, I just had a question.
Oh, okay.
How long does he forward? Are you going to lead him?
Okay, you're interrogating.
If you didn't expect me, yeah. I have not. I would like to be in town government just because I now have more time available than I had in the past. I've been a resident here since 1986.
Hold the mic a little closer.
Thank you. And, you know, I view the select board as a bit of a thankless job from what I understand of it. But, you know, it is an opportunity to just serve the town's people. And I'm not always sure that the town's views and opinions are getting across the way that I think they should. To me, a selectman or selectwoman or select person is a representative of the constituents. That's always. That's my view of it. Why I'm sure I might have it right.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah?
Hi, I'm Sean Hallissey. I live at 450 Woodland Road. I came to Vermont in 2008 to run St. Johnsbury Health and Rehab. It was a one-star center when I arrived with the same team. We turned it into a five-star center and that stops with Medicare and CMS. So I want to bring my professional skills for the select board and to the folks of the town to help maybe get things a little more organized, maybe to try to see about a real new town garage instead of fixing up one that's dilapidated. I want to try to protect the beautiful school system that we have and the beautiful neighborhood and ways that we have. I think it's really important because with the potential for global warming and food that won't be able to be grown where it is currently because it will be too hot or too dry, then we should protect the land so that in case fifty years from now our kids and grandkids and great-grandkids need the land to be able to live off of and survive, it's there. I grew up in New London, Connecticut, and as a young boy, I watched as all the farmland and woods got developed into malls and apartment complexes and housing developments. And I really don't think that's the right way to go. But if folks thought differently, you know, again, I would be a representative of the folks of the town. So it would be my job to work the will and the wisdom of the folks of the town on paper. So I appreciate your support. I also know this gentleman over here brought up longevity. You know, I learned from my work stability, greed, success. So if we could build a stable board that lasts for five or 10 years, we would be more cohesive. We would be able to work harder to be able to access federal and state grants, if there even are going to be federal and state grants in the future. But again, I want to work for you. I want to preserve and protect what we have. And preserve and protect makes me think of the fire department. We need to make sure we have good equipment and good folks that'll help do that. It also makes me think about something that I guess has been near and dear to Suki, and that's some sort of town patrol or policeman. If the town folks wanted that, we could do a cost analysis and a study and figure out are there enough violations that we would take money in from to afford that? Or do we really want that? Because it would change the character of the town. But public safety, public education, and protect the land, it's very important. And I appreciate and asking your support on Town Meeting Day. I live at 450 Woodland Road. My telephone number is 860-405-5827. And if you have any questions or worries or concerns, I'll definitely pick up the phone and answer the door and try my best.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything or announce for your intention to run for selectmen? It looks like you're hurting.
I just have a little back problem, so I'll be okay.
Okay, good.
Hi, my name is William Jones. I was, I grew up in Warford, went to school here, went to the academy. I work as a golf professional at the Newport Country Club right now in Newport. And I'm running for select board. You know, I gotta give it to Mr. Hallissey. He's got great long-term goals and plans for the town. I'm running for select board because there are some short-term issues that need to be addressed. We've seen over the last couple of years a lot of rather routine matters kind of go askew. And we had a gravel-crushing bid process that went a little sideways on us this year. Certain contracts were, you know, bidded out, signed and put together until it seemed like the last minute. And there just needs to be a better sense of cooperation between among the select board, but also better communication between the select board and town staff. Because at the end of the day, the town staff are very hardworking people. They're all we have to make sure that the brick-and-mortar stuff gets done in town. And I am willing and able to serve a three-year term if the people will have me. I believe that we need more transparency with our meetings. We have, you know, a nice livestreaming feature here. Hello to those following along on the Microsoft Teams. We need that at every select board meeting. And we can stick with this. You can livestream on the town's YouTube channel. There's a whole bunch of options there. But there needs to be greater transparency between the select board and the town's people as to how things are done. The citizens need to know that their concerns are being heard. And there's been a lot of pushback from a lot of people this past year, but in years past as well, that they don't feel like they're being heard around particular hot-button issues, but even just around, you know, routine matters. I know the communication about recovery from the flooding in town has been an issue to some people. That needs to be addressed. There's a lot that needs to be addressed in the short term. And it's important that we start at step one, which is communicate, communicate, communicate. Thank you.
Anyone else want to say anything? So that was the first selectmen's seat, which is the three-year, which is the one that was Gary Allers and would have expired next week. And then there are two one-year spots. You've got one of those, right, Kevin?
Correct.
And who's the other one? Okay, that's right. Ron and Kevin both have those. And is there anything you guys want to say? Now, if you want to run.
I will not be running.
You will not be running, okay? Will you be running on or do you want to keep us in suspense?
I plan on running.
Okay. Okay, so if you plan on running, you want to say anything now?
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Ron Gray. I served on the select board this past year, and it was a kind of a difficult year between the flooding and between the resignation of two board members. The board that was, remained was relatively inexperienced. And I had been a school board director for nine years, but that was better than 20 years ago. And, but, so we, there were some struggles because there's a lot, there's a lot to learn about being a select board member. So it is kind of unfortunate to have a large turnover because we started in from scratch. But I decided about whether to run again because as I think Ben said, it is a thankless job. And I expected criticism. We received some. But my work career was working for the construction section of the agency of transportation for almost 40 years. And when you're doing construction, you develop a thicker skin because your, the contractor doesn't see the inspection team as always their friends because we try to work to get things done well. We tried to get work to get things done well, but sometimes didn't see eye to eye whether you're being inspected plus you deal with unhappy owners and unhappy property owners because everybody likes construction when it's done, but they don't like it when it's happening. So, but anyways, I did decide to run again. So if you'll have me, I intend to run for the year term.
Ron?
Thank you.
Yes? At the meet and greet, you indicated you would like a one. Are you still?
Yeah, he just said he was going to run for the year term. Okay, so the other, well, the other one is two-year. I believe that is the remainder of Warner Hodgson's term. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so is that the one you're holding now?
That's the one I am currently holding, correct.
And are you?
Well, I'm just, I'm interested in just fulfilling the remainder of that term.
So that means you would run again. You would run for the remaining two years?
Yes, well, I think I would be running for the remaining one year of it. Isn't that correct?
No, there are two years left.
Was his term a three-year term?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I thought it was a two-year term.
There are no two-year terms.
Well, actually, I just want to run for a one-year term.
Well, why don't you come out here and make a speech and go? So you're planning on running for a one-year term, not to finish up this year?
That's correct. I have promised term isn't two.
My name is Suki Watson. And no, I did not grow up in Warford. I grew up in New Jersey, but that was a long time ago. And I worked for approaching 500 companies. And my job experience was mostly in biomedical research or from the clinical end and research toxicology and et cetera, et cetera. But I won't bore you with the details of that. I want to finish my term because I think there are a lot of those ends to tie up. And I'm trying to keep track of all those. And I think I have a lot of problems in defining certain policies that I think are confusing that we need to refine and make better. And also, there are just, you know, the projects that I was working on that because of so many issues that came up when I first walked on the board or got appointed in August, that I had to learn, okay, where are my little issues and what can I do to help? And so I like to be a voice of, you know, many people here in this town and represent you because that's what I believe in, that I'm a representative of all of you. And that's about all I have to say. So if you have any questions? Yes?
Warner has four positions available for selectmen. I'm not saying they don't. So the question is, one of the five must still have a name. So if she doesn't run for reelection?
She does because she was appointed. So whenever someone is appointed, at the next town meeting, you have to have an election to fill that.
That's my expectation.
A problem.
It's Sue that's not here. She's the only one.
She's the one that's got a three-year term, and she's not up for reelection this year. So there are two one-year terms and three three-year terms if everything was as normal. But because of two resignations last year, it kind of messes things up.
So the, one of the one-year terms, is that the one that she's going to finish out? And the two-year term, is that what's?
Suki was a little confusing here. She said she wanted to finish out the term that she's in, which is, there were two years left of it. And then she said she's going to run for one of the one-year terms.
I thought, because I thought it was, I thought it was a two-year term. That's my mistake.
Two-year term for one-year term.
Correct.
Right, so the remainder of Warner's term, which is two years left, will be voted on, and Suki's not running for it. So some of these other candidates will, I'm sure.
Another question. So at that meet and greet, were there other candidates who aren't here that were there? Is there a list?
There were others that were at the meeting the other night. You were there, right, Ron?
Yeah.
There were others that were there that are not here tonight. I'm trying to remember now.
They're not here. Mark, my, my, my. Tim Doan is here.
Yeah, so, so Tim Doan was, said he was going to run, and he's not here, I'm not sure. See, he's going to run for it. Tim! I didn't see you there. Do you want to say something?
Sure.
So wait, please, my folks.
Pardon me?
He's supposed to talk to the money.
I don't know. I'll tell you when he's coming.
My name is David Ollon. Lived here since 19, bought property in 86 and lived in 87. Spent my whole life here. First select board meeting I ever gone to was in September of last year. It was just on some concerns I had in my own. It was kind of enlightening for me. Out in Frankfort, one of the things that surprised me was a highway worker just didn't seem to want to hire or couldn't hire, or not really sure. But the answers didn't seem to be there when the questions were asked. The other thing was I heard there again with the highway department, they were putting a new roof on a building that's 60 years old, 70 years old, with black mold problem. But I didn't once hear anybody talk about a cost analysis between ripping that roof off, putting a new building on. Because once you get into a building with black mold, there's probably another area that you just can't see. And once you get in there, the building inspector comes in, now you're dealing with wiring, you're dealing with anti-cad accessible places, and the cost increases considerably. So I just thought it was kind of strange that nobody was getting that. Because when you look at the big picture, there might not be that much difference between repair and work CAD and spending money on bringing it itself. But I am interested in running for the one-year term. I got a background in chemical, construction, structural steel welding, pressure vessels. So my background is more mechanical than anything else. So hopefully, I can bring you all of that knowledge to the staff. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anybody else at the meeting that was here that I overlook?
Matt Fielder.
Mark. Hi, Mark.
Hi, I'm Matt Fielder. Been here most of my life. If I run, run, I want to do the one-year term as well. My background is business in construction most of my life. Lived in this town most of my life, worked in this, at this town for 20 years. Bring a lot of common sense knowledge to the table. Work out for the taxpayers, the town itself, and the employees of the town.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Well, it's great that we've got so many people interested in running and wish you all luck next Tuesday. So then the next article is to elect a lister for a term of three years. And Howard Remick is the incumbent for that. Is Howard here?
Nope.
I believe he is running for reelection.
Okay, my thanks. I thought he probably would, but I wasn't sure. Next is an auditor for a term of three years. Let's see if there's any time for that.
Same name.
Okay. Do you know if she's planning to run again?
She's not.
She's not planning to run again? Okay. Anybody interested in being an auditor? Pardon me? Is there another auditor here who can get a job description for one of the selectmen?
So each of them can see what you mean.
Do you want to? Well, why don't you come down here so everybody will know you can tell us what you do, what you want to do.
Hi, Erin Dimick, Old County Road South. So as a town auditor, there are three positions typically. And this year, Sandy helped as she could. And so quite often, there were just two of us, Dallas was, and I, meeting once a month, looking over the books, the finances from the prior month, basically. Meeting once a month. And then come January, February, we are putting together the town report. So you do put in a few more hours during that time. When we have some downtime throughout the year, there's some other things that we might look at. Might want to, you know, check in with the town treasurer, the assistant treasurer, see what they need, see if there's anything that, you know, the software. Look in, look into different protocols and whatnot. But we've been busy for the last couple of years, so we plan to do a little bit more of that, check some balances and stuff this year. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mara? Thank you. Just a, the.
Kathy was in Warford and resigned because of the conflict with her mom, Warner.
Right.
I've been trying to interest Kathy coming back in and I don't know if she's willing or not.
I don't have time during the day because I nanny all day. So I can't do it during the day. I nanny five days a week from 7:30 to 5:30.
That's probably more fun than being an auditor. So for those of you. Do we have it, buddy? Other than yourself? So for those of you who aren't here, there was just some talk about David Morrison's trying to caught Kathy Hodgson into running for auditor again, and she's got a more exciting job than she does. She's not interested. Anybody else interested in being an auditor? Here, you want to say you'll do it?
No, I'm not saying particularly. I watch screen, so it's just.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be a big time.
Well, watching kids is more fun than being an auditor, probably. Okay, so now we are up to, the next is the collector of the Lincoln Texas for a term of one year. That's Marceline here. I'm sure he's going to run again. Is Marceline here?
Marcel, Marcel's online.
He's online.
Oh, is he online?
Let's see if he answers.
Marcel, you're the one for collector of the Lincoln Texas again.
I guess so.
He guesses so. Good. Okay, then we've got the first constable for a term of one year, Tom Lawrence is holding that position now. Let's see Tom here. But I'm assuming that he will run, and then the second constable is Tom Thomas.
He's not running.
Tom is not running.
And my understanding is that Tom Lawrence isn't running either. But you'd have to.
Did you, did Tom tell you that, or did you just hear that?
He's, uh, he's told me that, uh, you know, in passing. I don't know how serious he was.
Okay, so, um, the, the first constable may not be running and the second constable may not be running. So if you're interested in those positions, um, you might have a chance, you have a chance anyway, but you might have no opposition from the incumbent. Okay, then we've got a library trustee for a term of three years, and two library trustees for a term of three years and one for one year. Anybody that's on the library board knows the terms, those are, if they're planning to run again. Looking for library trustees.
One of them is Carrie Ross, and she's running again.
Okay, so Carrie Ross is going to run again.
And the other one is, I believe, um, a person that was filling a vac- vacancy, summer design, Carolyn, um, and then, so she is going to run. Similar situation to Sukie. She was appointed, uh, and now, now that there's a town meeting.
Okay. Okay, well, if you're interested in being on the.
Is there still an available, or is there still an open one, or are they all?
There is an opening for one. The one year, I think, is to fill the remainder of the three-year term, because I believe all of those are originally three years. Is that right, Robin?
How often do, how often do you meet?
We meet once a month, and then as.
I used to be a, a trustee when I was little, and I have, should I sit?
Will I come down here and talk to some people in here? Are you, do you want to be on the board trustees again?
I, I, I would, I would consider. My name's Edie Amber. I taught school, a little bit of school for nine years before I approved my sons. And then I went back to the workforce as a parent to give a daily school. My last year there, I was a library assistant. I took media classes, um, for U B M. I was on the board in the past, and because of my family life, which was kind of a dick and I kind of straight away, and then, actually, you know, I, I had lost that year because last year, but nobody asked us to speak, which kind of bothered me. I mean, if she's fine, it's a secret, but I'm worried that nobody asked to speak. So I do have a background in education, and, um, I just sell the books at my house. I have a library. So, uh, I, I would be willing to run for one year.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, just so that people know too, even if you are not a trustee, you have friends of the library. So anybody that doesn't want to commit to the, the monthly meetings and the other work, well, there's definitely ways to contribute to the library, um, you know, if you're official.
So the library likes one year, it's no matter if it's trustees or just.
Exactly.
Helpful hands. Okay, so the next office is agent to convey real estate, Rosemary Zhang is the incumbent for that, and I expect she will run again. And then we get into the, um, special appropriations.
I have a question, you're free to remind me of that.
Yes.
You're assuming some of these people are going to run again. Is, is there a time, like they, they have to tell you because?
No.
They, they have to let you know.
They just need to get nominated when that position comes up at town meeting. And anybody can nominate anybody. You can either nominate yourself if you want.
So the people are saying, well, we have to nominate that, so let's nominate us.
Correct. Yeah, it's not like, you know, other, like the legislation stuff where you have to submit a petition. You just have to be nominated at town meeting. Okay, now we're getting into the special appropriations, so I kind of, yep, anybody wants to discuss these, but I'll just run through them quickly, and if you, uh, if there's something you want to talk about, you know, I'll let you talk. So thirty-five thousand three hundred for Davis Memorial Library, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to say the amount of money and where it's going. If it gets boring. Four hundred for rural community transportation, five hundred to Catamount Arts, twelve hundred and fifty to Catalunya Home Healthcare and Hospice, one thousand for umbrella, eleven hundred and four dollars for the Fairbanks Museum and Planetarium, five hundred dollars for both East Kingdom Council on Aging, seven hundred and fifty for Northeast Kingdom Youth Services, eleven hundred and fifty-nine for Northeast Kingdom Human Services, two hundred and fifty for Northeast Kingdom Learning Services, five hundred for Kingdom Animal Shelter, one thousand for Riverside Rescue. Morris? Yes? Could I say so? You can. Uh, just. Come over here, grab the mic, please. Uh, I was just going to explain, um, the, oh, I should rub it. The five hundred dollars for the Kingdom Animal Shelter, that's one that we've approved, that we, the voters, have approved in the past. The thousand dollars for Riverside Rescue, uh, that was a new request to the town to put that on. I, I, I'm not, not, not trying to, uh, sway anybody either way, it's just, I thought I'd let you know it's new. Uh, I believe that our, um, animal control officer, when he picks up stray dogs that can't find, I, I think, I believe he takes them to Riverside, Riverside Rescue, and I think that's in Lunenburg. But just, just trying to give you the background, uh, we've got two now instead of just the one requesting money. Okay, so, um, that was the last one, one thousand to Riverside Rescue. Thanks for the explanation, Ron. Then we get into the budgets, so Article fifteen is the hunger department budget of seven hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Does anybody on the board still want to say anything about the highway budget? Or before we see if anybody in the audience wants to say anything? I guess not. Anybody in the audience wants to say anything about the highway budget? Okay.
I have a question about things, though, that you listed. Where are those, is that what's requested from those organizations, or is that something that?
The special appropriations, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they were on before and are not asking for an increase. The selectmen just put them on, at least that's what I was saying, when I was a selectman in St. J. And if they want a big, this is a new one, they have to submit a petition, or if they want more money, they submit a petition. Is that right? I guess it's right, yes.
Send a letter, or all in a book.
Wait, did you want to say something?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question. The, uh, you said the, approving the highway budget is a separate article this year. That hasn't been the case in the past. Can you get any clarification as to why that's changed this year?
Would you, the selectman, want to explain why that changed this year? Anybody wants to, uh? Well. Explain why that changed. Well, I'm not sure if, if going to chair, I'm not sure I'm the one that, uh, uh, can best answer the question. It was, um, they do this in other towns, so, uh, is that right, Heather, there, there are other municipalities that break out the highway budget. What's the highway budget, the general fund and the fire department budget? I think it was Heather that proposed doing it that way this year in the select board. Uh, I, I agree with her, it, it gives a chance that if you, if the voters had a, a issue with a particular budget, um, they could vote to, to not approve the amount, that amount without defeating the entire town, town budget, you know, they could, uh, so they, they might have a, an issue with a particular s- section of the budget, but, uh, you know, they could, uh, so you could, you could defeat one section and the other two might get passed, or maybe all, all get passed, but, I guess that's all I have for an explanation.
Just note that this is the first time that we've done this.
Yes, yeah. Okay, that answers your question, doesn't it? Okay, um, then the next is Article sixteen, which is, will the town accept the proposed town motion of five forty-one, two seven five eleven? Anybody want to say anything about the town budget? Yes, wait.
I guess just a corollary follow-up, then, if, uh, say the highway budget gets amended from the floor, uh, but we have to separately make a motion to amend the town budget to be correct, or will that?
There are two separate amounts.
Okay, so there's separate that, I see.
So we will not have to amend the town budget if the highway budget gets changed. Article seventeen, will the town accept the proposed fire department budget of four, one forty-nine, one fifteen? Anybody from the fire department want to say anything about the fire department budget?
George?
Good.
Hello, for those that don't know me, my name is Colin Fuji. I'm a fire chief, uh, served my sixth year as fire chief. Third year in my second over. So we had a pretty good year with the fire department as far as the budget went. Uh, the way the budget is broken up this year, uh, you'll see that we have the fire department budget, and then our revenues are on a separate page. At the end of the day, the fire department came up with seven thousand dollars under budget, so we had a nice year. We were, uh, we were fortunate to receive some requests and some explanations this year, truly helpful, so that was great. We level funded for the most part. At the end of the day, it was about a two and a half percent increase. We had a line item last year for air packs, and we adjusted that. We have a few pieces of equipment, specifically air packs, jaws of life, um, that need some attention, so we did increase that line item a little bit. We, the truck was level funded this year, the purchase fund was level funded, and the town used to have the expense for lawnmower maintenance for those things built into the town budget, and that was broken out at nine hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which was an additional increase. So bottom line, the operational budget for the fire department was pretty much level funded. Any questions?
The air packs, was that an issue like last year, did you mention?
Yeah.
So, and, so, are they, have you been with us, or you go first?
The air packs are about ninety-seven hundred dollars apiece. We did acquire two new air packs this year. Uh, there's still several new ones.
So you're looking at like every year, like?
So what we did is we changed the language, the title for that category, instead of saying air packs specifically, we changed it to grant match, giving us a little more flexibility. Um, we have five hundred grants regularly, so fire act grants and other grants, and there's, there's often matches required. So if we're not budgeting for that match in some capacity, and now we've got a, you know, we get approved for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar FEMA grant, a federal grant, and we've got a five percent match, we can come up with some cash to be able to do that. So we've taken that line item, we've tried to do a little more flexibility to that, so it's just been renamed.
I just think it's important for you to know, air packs.
Yep, no, it's, it's definitely something we're trying to work on. Any other questions?
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. While we're talking about the fire department, I just heard when I got here tonight that Bill Bliss, you all know, was a great, uh, fired him for the water, for fire department, has had a health issue and, um, has brain bleed and has been put on hospice. The prognosis doesn't look good, so keep him in thoughts and prayers, and he's fighting for his life right now. The next one is, shall the town vote to transfer the highway department budget surplus to the capital reserve account for future, future construction of the highway department building? Anybody have any questions? Is there?
Looks like they're so moved out of it, but I think Heather said it was about a hundred thousand dollars in there.
That is correct.
So there's about a hundred thousand dollar surplus that, um, is proposed to be, um, put into a reserve for future construction of the highway department building. Article nineteen, authorize the select board to borrow money to defray expenses until taxes are collected. That's a standard one every year. Will the town, will the town, Catalunya County School District taxes paid to the town that's standard again? Article twenty-one, will the town let the interest charge for going for taxes? That's standard. Article twenty-two, to suggest members of the development review board to suggest members for the planning board. Article twenty-four for the town boards, commissions, and committees. Article twenty-five, will we accept the town report? Article twenty-six, that what power next year, voters wish to start the meeting. Article twenty-seven, transact any other non-mining business proper and necessary that may come before said meeting. So last year, as you may recall, there was a, um, a motion about, uh, opening up ATVs, opening up other roads to ATVs, and there were a couple of amendments, and that was tabled. So during the year, the selectmen had, um, considered it, it had a beginning just a week or so ago, and decided to keep the roads as they are, like the class four, the elements that can be opened to ATVs, but to make a few changes, hours and stuff. I think that last year, when it was brought up, there was some thought that the town's people could, in fact, change the, the regulation, but that's a town ordinance, and so the selectmen are the only ones that can change the town ordinance, and they control the, the highways, so town's people can't really do it, but there was a motion that was tabled, so I plan to bring it up under Article twenty-seven and, um, and see what happens. And I can't do that because it is non-mining. Anything that, that people would do would be non-mining, would be up to the selectmen to actually change anything to do with the, the ordinance for ATVs on town roads. Questions, anything about that, yes, David?
Could I back up to the special appropriations? I, I think it's just my memory here, but we used to vote on both the ambulance and NVDA. Ambulance, I think, is contracted now. But what happened to NVDA? Uh, this is kind of the board. Was that?
I.
arrangement, or do we still not give, do we still give to them?
It's not an appropriation. Um, NVDA is the regional planning commission, and Heather informs me that it's due, which we have to pay to them as part of Catalunya County and part of their catchment area, and so it's not, it's not optional anymore.
Just in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Thank you.
Article twenty-two, Morris?
Uh-huh.
Suggest members for development review board.
Uh-huh.
That will not be re-upping.
You're not gonna be on the development review board again, so...
It's my year, so...
Uh-huh, okay. So if anybody must be on the development review board, there's your chance.
Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody, there's a meal before town meeting, and there's either seven to seven or ten to seven. Vote on the, the unified school budget. That's been brought back some later.
Right, so the school budget's being voted on all day?
No, ten to seven.
Yeah, ten to seven.
Not all day.
That's almost all. And the, my time is, uh, my time is the meal?
Four forty-five.
Four forty-five.
Shepherd's Five.
Um, and, and Shepherd's Five made by David Morrison.
I don't go, I just want my...
Okay. Uh, Shepherd's Five, four forty-five, meeting at six. Any other questions before we adjourn this meeting? Yes?
Fire Department Pancake Breakfast is on March ninth. What is your school?
Okay, the Fire Department Pancake, Pancake Breakfast is on March ninth. Here with the school, that's a Sunday, on, right?
Eight to eleven.
Eight to eleven on March ninth, so put that in your calendars and count and support the fire department. Any other announcements, discussions? Okay, any selectmen want to say anything? Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you next Tuesday.
Thanks, everyone, for joining.